Kevin, are you cool with doing the...
Yes.
You gonna count me down?
Yeah.
Oh, to start?
Okay, alright.
Good evening and welcome to the February 24, 2016, meeting of the Milton School Committee. Before we begin, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as
First is this: since we last met, the Milton Public School community suffered a tragic loss. Kaitlin Clavett was a talented and gifted art teacher in our elementary schools for the past four years. By all accounts, particularly the amount of emails that we've received, Ms. Clavett was talented and was adored by staff, fellow educators, and by our students, and she adored them as well. Last week, her father said to us that the Milton Public Schools now have big shoes to fill and never were truer words spoken. So I ask that you join us in a moment of silent reflection in the memory of Kaitlin Thank you. Now on to the rest of the agenda. First, a couple of changes and additions to the agenda. First, because we have a presentation under the Chair's Report, I'd like to move the Chair's Report up to number four and the Superintendent's Report down to number five, so we can accommodate our guests. I'd like to add, under Chair's Report, as item B, which now will be 4B, Long Range Planning Subcommittee Review and Vote, and then as item C, Inclusion Task Force Representative Without objection, we'll make those changes to the agenda? Okay. So, first, Citizen Speak. Mara, do we have anyone for Citizen Speak?
We do not.
Okay. So we'll move on to the Chair's Report. Last August 26th, our committee had the pleasure of acknowledging an embarrassment of riches that had been bestowed on us by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Not one, not two, but three members of our community had been singled out by the MASC for awards. Mary Kelly, a longtime member of this committee, received the Friend of Public Education Award. Linda Lee Sheridan, another longtime member of this committee, was cited for the Community Leader for Public Education Award, and the Milton Foundation for Education and its co-presidents, Patty Elliott and Denise Quealy, were singled out as the outstanding school partner. As part of those awards, the recipients were invited to the statewide conference in November, and tonight, we have a representative of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to confer the awards on our three award winners. Steve Finnegan has joined us tonight. Steve has been associated with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees for almost 30 years. Steve has served as its Legislative Council and General Counsel for much of that time. Steve is a graduate of Georgetown University and New England School of Law. And of particular note, Steve is a resident of Milton, and he is the father of three daughters: Grace, grade nine at the high school; Stephanie, grade 11 at the high school; and Julia, who graduated Milton High in 2014. Please join me in welcoming Steve Finnegan.
Well, thank you very much. Glad you could put in the real number of years that I did before you, but nonetheless, that's suffice us. And I just wanted to say a word about school committees in general, and to start off with something, your particular superintendent, who I have come to know well over the years that my children have been in Milton Public Schools. And, you know, I was thinking, as I was driving home tonight, I said, "Now, what would I say about Mary?" And the first thing that came into my mind was that Mary is omnipresent in schools, as you know. And when I would first come down for chorus events for my daughters, or for soccer games, or for, you know, the general events that would be going on for parent-teacher, and many, many other things of that nature, Mary was always there at the front door, greeting everyone coming in with that wonderful joie de vivre that she has, and it's infectious. And I was thinking that Mary gets the little things right, and you know what they say about people that get the little things right: the big things come easily. And the proof of that is the great job she has done here as Superintendent of the Milton Public Schools, and the credit that has reflected upon all of us who are residents, et cetera, and with your direction, leadership, and with your support as well. So we appreciate that. As far as school committees in general are concerned, I have found over the years that -- and I have been to hundreds of school committee meetings, and literally probably thousands of school committee members that I have known one way or another over the years. And I would say that -- there's nobody here for the selectmen yet, I presume. I would say that, and this is the truth, I believe, that I was -- the thing I was most astounded about when I started with school committees years ago, of course, they were doing the personnel issues then, so there was -- but the number of meetings, the time spent at the meetings, the time spent in executive sessions. When I was first representing the city of Lawrence in my individual representations in the school department, I would go up there at 7:00 for a meeting, and frequently wouldn't leave until 1:30, 2:00 in the morning, after extensive executive sessions on a variety of interesting issues. But it's the time, and particularly during the budget season, when you're meeting two, three nights a week, sometimes at tables like this, sometimes away from them, in terms of preparation for the meetings that are coming up. You know, you pour over those line items, the budget books, I know in most places, somewhere around this high, and that's probably no different here, with literally hundreds or thousands of line items in them. And you've got to be able to defend each and every one of those, indicating at town meeting, what does that stand for? How many personnel are there? What's the full-time equivalent? Whatever the case might happen to be. And, you know, you do a very good job at that. And so it is true that -- and I just think it's important sometimes for somebody like me to say that, because, you know, you're not here to toot your own horn, and you don't. But in terms of the number of hours spent, there's no question in my mind that the school committee is the body, locally, that holds that distinction. And after all, it's a great cause, isn't it? You know, it's the support and education of our children. What could be better than that? You do a good job, I thank you, as a resident of Milton, and on behalf of the Mass Association of School Committees. We are here tonight to present a few awards to initially two former members of the school committee, and one of them, Linda Lee Sheridan, who is receiving the Community Leader for Public Education Award, and an award that is richly deserved. Mary, as all of you, brings certain unique characteristics to the table here. Linda's experience was particularly helpful as a teacher, and there are many teachers that serve on school committees. It's kind of a natural draw, obviously not from the same community, but from others. About 25% of the school committee members in Massachusetts are teachers, and that has been a fairly consistent figure over the years. But also as a principal, which is, of course, much rarer, and, you know, she brought those skills to the table, knowing what the superintendent was presenting in an intimate way, having dealt with them in her own positions in public education. I'm sure that she was able to be very effective, most recently, when you were dealing with the implementation through collective bargaining of the evaluation instrument. Just as a disclaimer, myself and Mike Long, my counterpart at the Superintendent's Association, had a hand, along with the Teachers' Association, in coming up with the template for that. It's something we usually don't belly-hoo, that's for sure, because neither Mike or I was satisfied with the result, but also the teachers weren't either, so I suppose that's the definition of a good agreement. But Linda, I'm sure, would have gone through that as a principal in terms of the school that she taught at, and I'm sure brought that expertise here, and it was undoubtedly very helpful to the committee at the time. So nine years as a school committee member, that's a long time to serve in a committee. I would say the average tenure these days is probably more like three or four years. But nine years is a long time, and it's a testament to her abilities, and her dedication to teaching, and her dedication to the Milton Public Schools in a leadership role. So we're very happy to present her with the Community Leader for Public Education Award, which is naturally on the bottom. And this is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and the Milton School Committee. By the way, all of these honorees were submitted by the Milton School Committee and voted upon and by the Superintendent. Our honor to recognize Linda Lee Sheridan, Community Leader for Public Education, for your support, commitment, leadership, and sustained efforts to enhance the educational opportunities of the students of the Milton Public Schools. 2016 Jacob Olivera, President, Massachusetts Association of School Committees. If you want me to present this.
Can you just do a recap, so she can get the shot?
Sure. Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next award goes to Mary Kelly, who I know unfortunately was unable to be with us tonight, but we would make note of it anyhow. And she is also receiving an award as a Friend of Public Education. Now, Mary, as Linda beat by a term, with 12 years on the school committee, now that's something. Used to be, years ago, when I first started, people run committees forever. You know, you'd be there for 20 years. I remember one committee that I represented, which was a regional school district, vocational, so they had a dozen communities, and there were -- the person with the least tenure in the committee had 20 years. Phew. So -- but that was a while ago, and times have changed, and that's unusual today, and we appreciate, of course, Mary's good service in the committee. She brought a business background to the committee, she was very interested in budgets. I'm, of course, here with a group of stars, because I watch you on TV occasionally, and as a result, that's how I got to see Mary and how she was working on the committee. But she was a proponent of special education as well, it was very near and dear to her. You know, I'm sure her service is very much appreciated here, obviously, by suggesting her for some of these awards, and again, we're very appreciative of her service. This award says, "Mass Association of School Committees and the Milton School Committee are honored to recognize Mary Kelly, Friend of Public Education, for your commitment to public education, and your generosity of time, energy, and support to enhance the educational opportunities of the students of the Milton Public Schools. 2016 Jacob Olivera, President, Mass Association of School Committees." And finally, all things seem to begin and end in Dorchester, which, of course, was the place of my birth, St. Anne's Parish. And in St. Anne's Parish, not too far away, a few across the street and up the street a little bit, three or four houses, was a fellow named Joe Quahley. And Joe, and my brother Joe, were about the same age, you know, very good friends, and we've seen Joe recently at a couple of things in the last year or so. And so when I ran into Denise and heard the last name as Mary was introducing me to her, that was my first question, and the answer was, "Oh, yes, you know, that's my father-in-law." So you never know, as they say, they begin and they end sometimes. And this is for the Milton Foundation for Public Education, which I remember when this started about 20 years ago, I think Bryn Lovely had called me on it, and there was some legislation that needed to go through in order to allow them to make gifts to the school, et cetera, and for you people to be involved in it. And, you know, at the time when he had called me on it, I said, "A foundation for public education?" I said, "Never heard of that." And it wasn't available, it wasn't around. Of course, you've got the Copeland Foundation and other things, but not for something that was school-oriented, at any rate, at that point in time. And now, of course, they're very common. But I'm sure there's nothing common about the Milton Foundation for Public Education, quite the contrary, I'm sure they are very extraordinary, and from my view of it, from not too far up the street here, I would say that that is certainly true. For 20 years, they have provided programs and opportunities for Milton students that would be on the reach of the budget. As you go through and you find things that you have to cut, and I'm sure this year will be no different from, unfortunately, the last several, and undoubtedly, there will be things that you would want to do that you can't do, and sometimes, they are able to fill that gap. Some of the things that they have done for the district include the purchase and installation of classroom technology, funding for science and science programs, supporting outstanding teacher awards, and other contributions, particularly those to the Celebration for Education, which is the major fundraiser for the Milton Public Schools. For all of their work, which is ongoing, and again, I suppose, many times, thankless, and it's a pleasure to present this award to the Milton Foundation for Public Education, to Patty Elliott and Denise Quahley, representing the foundation. And this says, "The Mass Association of School Committees and the Milton School Committee are honored to recognize Milton Foundation for Education Outstanding School Partner for its support, commitment, leadership, and sustained efforts to enhance the educational opportunities of the students of the Milton Public Schools. 2016 Jacob Olivera, President, Mass Association of School Committees." Thank you, and I'm just gonna -- do you want to leave this here?
We'll get that to Mary.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you very much, Steve. And congratulations to all of our awardees for all your hard work and everything that you've brought to our school system. Moving on, we have our -- members of our warrant committee here, so we want to try to move through just a couple of items. What we added to the item is the Long Range Planning Subcommittee. We've talked about this previously on a few occasions, and I have today been able to present to the committee a nomination package for our Long Range Planning Advisory Subcommittee. This Subcommittee, as you may recall, is charged with identifying long-range goals and innovations for the district, as well as potential concerns, and to recommend to the school committee a process for achieving those goals or addressing those concerns. The proposed nomination for this committee is that it be comprised of nine members: two school committee members, Dr. Kevin Donahue and Leroy Walker, a member of the school administration, Mary Gormley, or her designee, the high school principal, James Jett, or his Jett designee, the middle school principal, Karen Spalding, or her designee, and elementary school principal, Elaine McNeil-Germay, or her designee, and three community members or in-or-subject matter experts. We have lined up, and we have -- we've had three subject matter experts and community members have graciously agreed to serve on this committee. Steve Paxia, who is a Pierce parent and a former member of the Tucker Site Council, is a digital publishing and education technology consultant. Spencer Blaisdell is a Pierce parent, who has written strategic plans previously for charter schools, and is CEO of -- excuse me, CEO of Schoolworks. And I had another note on Spencer. I want to make sure I get it right. Oh, here it is. Spencer is soon to become again -- to join again the Academy of Pacific Rim, a 5- to 12-grade charter public school in Boston, as its Executive Director. And our third subject matter/community member is Dr. Michael Middleton. Dr. Middleton is Dean of the College of Education and Human Development at EMAS Boston. He began his professional career as a high school mathematics teacher, and he has led a distinguished career over two decades in education. So we are lucky to have such a distinguished panel, and so I would ask for a vote. If the members are comfortable, I know I was only able to get the package to you today because we only had confirmation last night, and so if anyone's not comfortable voting, just let me know. But I would like to get this committee going. I know our community members are anxious to get going, so if everyone's comfortable, I'll entertain a motion to approve the nomination package for the Long Range Planning Advisory Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. And then the last item, oh, thank you very much, the last item on the Chair's Report is the Inclusion Task Force Representative. The administration, in conjunction with the CPAC, has put together an Inclusion Task Force to undertake some very important action items to enhance inclusion in our school system, and we are lucky to have a school committee member who is interested and has already begun working with the Inclusion Task Force, and I would like the school committee to vote to approve Leroy Walker as our designee to the Inclusion Task Force. And -- motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Kristin.
I think it's great. I had offered to be your backup, because I think it's such an important committee, and I think it says something that all of us care so much about that Subcommittee, so really appreciate you.
You can be my backup anytime.
I took it back, but I really do appreciate you doing it. It's so important. Thank you.
Yeah, ditto. Thank you for volunteering. Yeah, it is a very important committee.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous. That concludes the Chair's Report. Moving on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Chairman Zulus. Very briefly, we have a good news story for this field trip approval that we're requesting. Assistant Superintendent Chan.
Thank you, Superintendent Gormley. So generally, we submit first a preliminary approval form for field trips, but because our girls and boys track teams both are going to the Nationals, we just found out -- and because the meets, the competition is the weekend of March 11th through March 13th, we did have to submit a final trip approval form. So the -- both teams will be traveling in our new district van, which we're very excited about, and they will be leaving on Friday afternoon. One group will be leaving a little bit earlier with some parents, and the others will be traveling on the van. They will not be -- some will miss half a day of school, and others will be leaving right after school. They are -- they have plans to stay at a hotel in New Jersey, which is very close to the Armory Track and Field Center, which is in New York City. The safety of the students, what we did was we included in our proposal form everything in the field trip policy that was required. The safety of the students will be maintained through the chaperones. They will be supervised at all times. There is a budget provided, arrangements at the Hilton. Meals and expenses are going to be provided for students, registration and entry fees. So we do not anticipate any costs, again, because of the timeline for this meet, the teams were not able to participate in any fundraising activities. And Superintendent Gormley, did you say that you wanted to talk about the fundraising?
Yes, so it was always important, the irony to remember Mary Kelly, that no student would be excluded, that was always very important to her. So all the students will be participating, and in the spring, we'll come up with an outstanding fundraiser to cover the costs. Obviously, the district would cover the cost of the registration, and as a result of -- we'll deal at the next meeting, the Copeland Family Foundation, the donation of a van, it's really only the gas coverage. So minimal hotel costs, and we're going to have a fundraiser in the spring. So thinking of Mary Kelly tonight, no child wouldn't be able to participate in this honor.
So additionally, the field trip policy requires that a statement be made by the field trip coordinator, that parents have submitted permission slips and have been notified, provided all of the emergency information needed. So they are in the process of sending out their permission forms, so that is not in place yet, but it will be.
Quick question. Ms. Patrick Jones.
Who's the fourth chaperone? You have three listed, but you say two.
We don't have a name of the fourth yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Mary Gormley.
All right, I will move -- oh, go ahead, Mr. Ward. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
And very -- very --
Oh.
Very briefly, my happenings will be in our blast tomorrow, but I would ask at the conclusion of this athletic season, we have some good news stories, so student representative Grace Farrell is going to give us a brief update, and I have to say that Grace does an outstanding job, and we get a lot of feedback of how Grace shares these accomplishments. Her peers, it's powerful, Grace, if you would.
All right. So the boys' basketball team started the season with a 0-5 record, and have turned it around in the last 15 games, going 10-5, qualifying for the MIA Division II Boys Basketball Tournament. Seating and pairing for the tournament will be released by the MIA Seating and pairings for the tournament will be released by the MIAA on Friday. They'd like to thank all of those who have supported the basketball program throughout the season, especially the singers who sang the National Anthem, cheerleaders, administration workers, managers, and the dance team. The basketball team's overall record was 10-10. The girls' basketball team finished their regular season with a 5-14 record. Captains Olivia Chin, Sarah Dragon, Sarah McMenon, and Joanna Needham were excellent leaders on and off the court. Seniors Averberg and Amina Elsad, junior Lucy Crawford, sophomores Megan Bernardi, Jean Marie Fallon, Shannon Milton, Kelly Shay, and Shawna Sullivan, and freshman Kara Milken all contributed to the team and were a pleasure to coach and improved as the season went along. The JV Cheer Squad has finished their season with yesterday's game versus Wellesley. The varsity squad will continue to cheer for our varsity basketball team as they have advanced to the tournament with last night's win against Wellesley. The boys' hockey team has a record of eight wins, nine losses, and three ties. The team need to get a win and tie in their last two games, tonight at home against Barnstable and Friday night at Brockton. They are coming off a 1-0 win against Westford Academy, where sophomore captain Tommy Noonan scored his sixth goal of the season, and freshman John Driscoll got his first varsity goal. The girls' hockey team's overall record is 13 wins, six losses, and three ties, and the Bay State League record of 11, 3, and 2, so they got second place. This puts the team in a good place for heading into the tournament. The girls qualify for the Division II tournament for the third year in a row. Some significant highlights are Elena Kapolos hit her 100th heart point mark this season, and now stands at 111 points for her career. Julia Scannell hit the 100-point mark as well, and she stands at 105 points for her career. Laura Hill is at 90 points for her career and will be the next 100-point scorer. The senior class has won 50 games over their four-year career at Normandy, achieving that mark in the win over number one Wellesley. Goalie Mary O'Connell recorded her first varsity shutout against Wellesley. The team is looking forward to an exciting Division II tournament beginning next week. The wrestling team finished the season with a record of 9-11. It was a good season in which the team had many young wrestlers in the lineup. The team saved its best wrestling for the end of the season when they hosted the Division II Metrosectional Wrestling here in the Copland Field House. Dane Mahika took first place, and three other wrestlers, Mal Easterling, Zach Fisher, and Mark Lebel, all qualified for the state tournament. The sectional tournament held here in Milton was a giant undertaking, and they want to thank the administration, the boosters, the custodial staff, and of course, all the wrestling parents for their support for making it a great day. The boys' track team finished third in the Division IV state meet. Although this is not what the team was hoping for, there were still some fine performances. Colin Keely took third in the 1,000-meter, and Kyle Dempsey took fourth in the 600-meter. In the 55-meter dash, Derek Perkins finished third, and Smith Charles finished fourth. The 4x800-meter relay team consisting of Colin, Kyle, Tim Lynch, and John Lanane captured third. Smith took second in the high jump, and Derek finished fifth. The 4x200 relay team, which had the fastest time in the state, was out because of an injury. In the all-state meet, Smith Charles placed fourth in the 55-dash with Colin and Kyle, passed on their individual races, and ran the 4x800 relay with Tim and John. The team placed ninth. Smith finished ninth in the high jump as well. He will run the dash in the New England Track Meet on Sunday. The 4x200 relay team consisting of Kobe Ozazi, David Perkins, Smith Charles, and Derek Perkins will compete in the New Balance National Indoor Track Meet in New York City on March 12th. It has the 12 fastest time in the nation. The girls' track team is in the middle of a very successful postseason. On Friday, February 12th, they won the Division IV state title with a score of 91.5 points. Individually, Colette O'Leary won the 1,000-meter, and Elisa O'Leary won the 600-meter. In the relay, the team won the 4x400 meter of Colette, Sophie Cousineau, Sarah Kendall, and Alexis Villosh, as well as the 400, the 4x800 relay of Colette, Josie Cousineau, Eliza O'Donald, and Clota Corcoran. Last week at the all-state meet, seven girls qualified for the New England Championships to be held this Sunday at the Reggie Lewis Center. The athletes and their events are Alexis Daly, the 55-meter dash, Abigail Jean-Baptiste, long jump, Jessie Iwala, high jump, Colette O'Leary, 1,000-meter, Elisa O'Leary, 600-meter, and the 4x400 meter team consisting of Colette, Alexi, Alexis Villosh, and Sophie Cousineau.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace.
That was a lot.
Okay, old business, I don't believe we have any old business or citizen speak topic response. Next meeting agenda items. I think we're all set with that. Citizen speak, Mara, do we have anyone? No? And so we're going to adjourn to meet with the Board of Selectmen and the Warrant Committee. Before we do that, I have a brief announcement that is a bit of a personal nature. Not quite two weeks ago, I announced in the media that I intended to seek reelection to the school committee. At that time, I was fully committed to serving another three years on this body. Since then, however, and particularly in the last few days, much has changed in our community's public offices. Those changes have caused me to rethink how I can best serve our community going forward. Over the coming weeks and months, I will be taking a hard look at other opportunities to serve. Given that, I could not in good conscience, and I would not, ask my neighbors for their votes for another three years on the school committee. Therefore, I will not be a candidate for reelection to the school committee. Let me say that the opportunity to serve as a member of this body, and particularly as the chair, has been a privilege, and I believe that our work together has yielded results. As I've mentioned before, I believe that the state of the Milton Public Schools is very good. We have a public school district that we are proud of, that is envied by its peers, that helps to keep property values high by attracting families to Milton, and most importantly, that provides a top-quality education to each child in our town. Now, my view of public service harkens back to the founding of this country. Get involved, try to add some value for a period of time, and then leave it to others to try to add their value. I encourage all those who have an interest and who have value to add to seek election to the school committee. It has been my honor to work with the talented educators, administrators, and public servants seated at this table, and it will be any person's honor to do so as well. I look forward to the work of this committee over the next few months and to see what the future holds beyond that. So, if there's nothing further, we can adjourn. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and we'll go into our meeting with the Warrant Committee. Second?
No.
All right, all those in favor? All right, we're adjourned. We'll see you again next week on March 2nd, and we'll see you with the Warrant Committee.